Turn it up so you can hear it and share.
You never wear the one my kids gave you.
Not outside the house, so.
Dare we start a minute early? Okay, the clock is showing five o'clock. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Regular meeting of the Carefree Town Council, Tuesday, March first. Hard to believe, twenty twenty-two. Call this meeting to order, roll call. I believe we are all here, Candace. Pledge of allegiance. Stacy, would you please lead us? Thank you all for coming. Before we start on the items on the agenda, we're going to pull, excuse me, item number twelve and continue that through a future meeting. On the consent agenda, we have items one through six with the exclusion of item number two. Pull that and put that on a subsequent meeting as well. So on the consent agenda, we will have item number one. Approval of the January fourth, two thousand twenty-two Town Council regular meeting minutes. Item number three, approval of the February fifteenth, two thousand twenty-two joint meeting of the Carefree Town Council and the Public Safety Advisory Committee. Item four, acceptance into the public record of the February two thousand twenty-two paid bills. Item five, acceptance of the cash receipts and disbursement report for December of two thousand and twenty-one. And item six, approval to enter into the annual enforcement services intergovernmental agreement and the sheltering agreement with Maricopa County Animal Care and Control for the period of FY two thousand twenty-three through FY two thousand and twenty-eight. Are there any of the council members that have a question over any of those five items on the consent agenda?
I just had one mayor, there was a line item at the end of the page, just mentioned there was Candace, you may know this better, but it says, understanding the budgetary impact to our partners, the sheltering services fee structure provides a thirty-three percent licensing revenue credit to the town.
This is on the animal shelter on item number six.
Right, last paragraph, page one, I just thought, well, maybe, I just.
That's just what it says, mayor and council. They do keep track of jurisdictions, so pet licensing within Carefree, there's credit back to us for that as far as.
They offset the expenses for the year when there's a.
Each year.
A surplus of each year, then they credit that back to us.
Any further questions? Hearing none. I would accept a motion to approve items one and three through six on the consent agenda.
Motion to approve items one, three, four, five, and six.
Motion has been made and seconded. Candace, would you please poll the council?
Mayor, I can poll the council, but since you are all in, all here in person, we can go back to just our, our, we'll call for, or our regular vote.
Okay, let's do that. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Those opposed, thank you. Okay, those items pass. Call to the public. Let me read something here, which we do before each one of the call to the public. Public comment during a call to the public. An opportunity will be provided to members of the public to provide public comment through written submission to council members on any topic of concern or interest to them during call to the public. A member of the public wishing to submit a written comment must do so through the Carefree website to candace@carefree.org. For comment to be read, it must be received by twelve o'clock noon on the day of the council meeting. Any comment submitted after that time may not be read until the next council meeting. Usually on the afternoon of council meetings, it's somewhat even more frantic in the town offices and, and, and a lot of things are being done. Public comment during the time when a topic on the agenda is under consideration. If a member of the public wishes to speak during the time that a specific topic on the agenda is under consideration and public comment is permitted at that time, please fill out and submit an appropriate form, which Candace has over here, to the town clerk. Public comment raised during the time when a specific agenda item is under consideration must pertain to that agenda item only. Any comment on a topic on the agenda not under discussion at that time will not be permitted. A comment cannot exceed three minutes in length. Next steps and permitted response from council members to comments received. During and following the reading of any public comment, members of the council are prohibited by state statute from answering or responding in any manner to a comment, except in response to personal criticism and/or a statement which they know to be false. Topics raised at call to the public that have not been published in the agenda cannot be discussed because that way, if they're not on the agenda, people who may have an opposing viewpoint won't have an opportunity to listen, be persuaded by the arguments presented or present the contrary one. Not on the agenda cannot be discussed or considered by the council due to the lack of prior notice to the public. When one or more members of the council believe that a comment merits further review and discussion, they may refer it to the town staff for further investigation. Staff will then investigate the matter and report back to the council when their investigation is completed. Having said all that. To the regular agenda, item number eight, current events. John, would you like to start this off, please?
Yeah, we have a few current events. Sky Ranch has their sixtieth anniversary coming up on April second. So it's a car show, airshow, but it's all static, so it's all on the ground. It's free. We approved, council approved some lane restrictions on Cape Creek Road a couple of months ago for this. But it's, it's a lot of fun. They did it two years ago, great turnout, great cars, all the cars are pre nineteen eighty. So there's some real classics there, probably about a hundred vehicles. So swatch up, the town will publish information on social media. Swatch for that, it'll be, it'll be a lot of fun. April second, and it goes from ten to two P M. The next item is on our garden seminars. We've done two garden seminars this year, we've done them in the pavilion. For the first time, we've done garden seminars in the pavilion, and we had on both occasions, more than a hundred people attend, it was just incredible. So we have another one coming up on March twelfth. We've changed the schedule a little bit, this is entitled gardening for wildlife and pollinators. So Carrie Anne Funachelli is coming up to Tucson, she's a landscape designer, and it promises to be a very good program. So just come on out, it's in the pavilion. It's working, nothing can go wrong if it rains, it very rarely rains, so it should be great. And then, lastly, the town is putting together an Earth Day on April thirteenth from nine to eleven, sorry, nine A M. to one P M. in the pavilion. So we did this two years ago. So we had rattlesnake solutions out there, they brought rattlesnakes, box cages, Wild at Heart was there with some predator birds, Desert Fodos Land Trust, Royal Metro's there, the water companies there talking about water conservation, that kind of thing, there'll be a few other organizations present. It's, it's a nice morning to just go out, walk in the garden, check out these guys, it's really cool. Whether you're adult or you have children or grandchildren, it's a fun thing to do. So let's watch for that, we'll have some work, as that comes together, we'll have more details being published on social media.
Thank you, John.
John, just a quick question. I have friends that have submitted their cars for entry into the Sky Ranch event. Are they going to be notifying people who is accepted because they may have more than a hundred entries?
Yes, so where are the suggestions? Get with me afterwards, and I'll let you know who's, who's managing it.
Okay. Send it on.
There are, there are a number of things here, just to, to put out there so that we all know, and, and fire update. As I think all of you know, the wetter the spring, the more foliage there is that can burn in the summer. So now is the time, if you have that kind, we don't have a wet spring so far, but nevertheless wildfires up here are something that is significant and can be significant. Gary, you've been heading up this and, and certainly we're all sensitized to it, given the the fire and the first responder kinds of activities that we've been dealing with, but I wonder if you might talk about that for just a moment, please?
Yes, mayor, members of the council. We sent out a newsletter earlier this week, actually, it's Tuesday, so yesterday. Speaking of fire wise, and now's the time to turn your attention to your respective property and, and look for those non-indigenous weeds that flourish this time of the year, even if we do not have the seasonal rains that we typically have in the springtime, we typically still see those weeds popping up and, and those weeds are added fuel load to these fires. And what we saw with the fires back in May of twenty twenty in Cave Creek is they fed the fire, and so it's very important for our residents to take note that now's the time to manage those weeds, so you don't have a larger project ahead of you later on this, this spring and summer. That being said, we have retained the service of past fire chief John Kratz, who is evaluating our fire program as we look towards the future, looking at the different options. If you recall the presentation of the Public Safety Advisory Committee, there's the original option of staying with, with Royal Metro, but as the Public Safety Advisory Committee articulated to you, they would not qualify for automatic aid. If the goal is, is going towards automatic aid, there is a couple regional partners, being Scottsdale, Daisy Mountain, that are being investigated and flushing out the respective all-in costs. When the Public Safety Advisory Committee evaluated it, the respective partners would only give us a high level of cost, so we're trying to evaluate what the all-in cost would be. We're also trying to cross-pollinate what those costs will be relative to our own fire department and essentially Chief Kratz is well versed on the assets that we have invested in of automatic aid requirements. And so he knows what we have, he's putting together an assessment of what it would cost to retain our own labor force for a fire department. And right now, those, those numbers are coming in relatively competitive with the, the automatic aid partner, so something to be said there. The beauty of that approach is you maintain control of your fire department and you don't outsource it to another political entity that then controls the overall policies and costs on an annual basis. So there's, there's some self-control there, so.
Our own, our own fire department would be eligible for automatic aid?
Yes, so Chief Kratz has also talked to the Life Safety Council, he's talked to many fire chiefs within the automatic aid program. We would still have to apply and go through the same process that all the other entities have done. There will be requirements that, that are required to, to fulfill the standards of automatic aid, and, and we would go through those requirements and ensure that we meet them from foreman to the truck, to the respective training, to the radio equipment, and some of the assets that will need to, to upgrade, such as maybe a brush truck or a tinder truck. So we will evaluate those at, that time when, when we make application to, to the Life Safety Council. So it's a whole overall process, and that's something that can be worked through and flushed out. And it's important to note that there's many automatic aid partners, small communities like Carefree that have one fire station. Obviously, it's scalable, and so we will look at a scalable option that's relevant to Carefree. So that's what Chief Kratz is exploring. Now, all this costs money, and we've retained Jim Rounds. You might recall Jim Rounds was the financial analyst, economist, and policy analyst that works at the state level as well, as well as local level to analyze impacts like this, and he's doing a, a financial capacity impact statement to see how this, this can be managed from a Carefree perspective. How does it fit into our financial model? So he's doing that evaluation, he's also going to evaluate the health of, of Daisy Mountain Fire District. There was some concerns raised by council on, on some of their liabilities based upon the CAFR and, and what that has disclosed, so there will be an analysis there too. So Jim Rounds is, is also retained. So in the next forty-five to ninety days, they will make those, those assessments, they will come back to the council and present a draft, and the next step after that draft would be to go out to the citizens and hold a series of open houses. And Chief Kratz, as well as Jim Rounds, will be part of that, as well as folks from the past Public Safety Advisory Committee that did the deep dive, and there'll be collective conversations within the community to discuss the, the fire program moving forward. So that's a brief update with the fire program.
Thank you. I know Councilman Hatcher had some comments and questions about that as well.
I, I did, I, real quick. If we adopted or integrated automatic aid, the personnel come from Scottsdale and Phoenix Services, the individuals, and, and/or if we have our own firehouse, who mans the house?
If it is our own firehouse, it would be our own labor force. So it would be our own firefighters that we would retain. So we would retain the services, we would hire a chief, a battalion chief, as well as three captains and respective firefighters to man each one of the three shifts. If we contract out with Daisy Mountain or Scottsdale, it would be a similar setup, a similar hierarchy. There will be some shared positions. For, for example, if we hired Daisy Mountain or retained the services of Daisy Mountain, there might be a shared battalion chief with Daisy Mountain, of course. So that doesn't mean that there's an overall economy of scale with going with Daisy Mountain because there's the overhead of the respective fire district. And so that's one of the things that Jim Rounds is going to do a deep dive on is essentially what, what would that overhead be and what those costs would be moving forward. And so looking into the future, the escalator associated with that would probably exceed have our own fire department and the costs associated with our own fire department. So all that's going to be evaluated, as far as who will respond, who would be our partners in automatic aid. If a call came into the Phoenix Dispatch, rather than being dispatched through Royal Metro in the future, it will be dispatched through Phoenix Dispatch, is we would have the backup of the Daisy Mountain Fire Station in Cave Creek now. We would have the backup of the City of Phoenix Fire Station at south of Carefree Highway, Cave Creek Road, and the two fire stations in Scottsdale, six fifteen and six sixteen, which are just on our border. So we would essentially have five fire stations servicing the town of Carefree as, as one cohesive force.
Excellent. One of the other things, and thank you, Gary, and that is, I think it would be who council members, and we've talked this, to sit in the back to be, not to be a part of, but to learn from these meetings that are coming up, because, you know, sometimes you sit through one, you sit through two, and the third one, something becomes clearer, because these are going to be big decisions. And then we want to make sure we have a clear understanding of what the advisory committee is saying and what they found out and what the implications and what, what the residents are saying about it. So, you know, I think we'll, we'll try and announce in, in advance when those are going to be, and I would encourage as many council members as can sit in the back and listen and absorb and, and try and get a feeling for the, what's going on here.
And, and mayor, just to add to that, the open houses, we'll probably look at doing in the fall, we would not have those open houses in the summertime when people are typically traveling. So we would look to, to having those open houses in September and October, and perhaps decisions, community decisions coming in November.
Okay, fine. The one other aspect relative to the initial part of that discussion on the fire update, and that was channel twelve, from the basis of what you had, what had been written and communicated encouraging residents to be fire wise, to trim up their, their lots and their properties now, not wait until summer. I think from that, and Carefree is one of the first ones apparently out there, why I think you were mentioning channel twelve would like to come up and, and interview.
That, that is correct, mayor members of the council. We did receive a call today from, from channel twelve. They did pick up on our, our newsletter, speaking of fire wise, and wanted to do a story on that. If you recall, Chief Soul from Royal Metro is a wildland expert within the state of Arizona. So they will be interviewing him to speak of mitigating those fire hazards on your respective property. So we, we have received some press association with that.
I have a question. So Gary, is this, is this still correct that Royal Metro, if you call them, will come to your home and do an inspection of your property?
That is correct. We, we do have the audits that are available through Royal Metro, and they do an audit of your property, that is correct, that's a service that's provided through the master contractor.
That's free. So if you, if you don't think your home is fire safe, you have any doubt, they'll just come on over and check it out and let you, let you know what they think, it makes suggestions.
And I know Chief Kratz tells us a lot, now is the time. You know, you go back on some of the Cave Creek fires, why those started with someone who was trimming during the summer? And it's dry, and, you know, any kind of a spark is going to set that off, so now is the time to do that. Going on a couple other things here. Reading, there are a number of council members, Mr. Johnson right here, Mr. Vince over, over on this side, the Elysio, and myself, and my wife, Mary. We'll be reading at Cave Creek Unified School District tomorrow is, is it Dr. Spock or?
Dr. Seuss.
They, and, and I think last year I had, I don't know, how the elephant lost its spots. A number of things like this. It is tremendously, it's a lot of fun. The kids are eager, they want to talk about things, they have experiences that that reminds them of, and it is great, and I'm delighted to see the four of us going. I think that Herbert Hitchen and Lynn will be there to take some photos. We're, so that will be outstanding, and we're looking forward to that.
Did you say?
Tomorrow.
Tomorrow?
Tomorrow, yes. And Councilwoman Croyer was going to do that, but her schedule changed at the last second, she was not able to. So I volunteered, Mary, and they accepted it, which she found out half an hour ago.
Mayor, I have one more question for Gary, please. The audit, if we did the automatic aid, what's the contractual timeframe on that?
So if we went with Daisy Mountain, if you use the template that has been approved through the town of Cave Creek, that I G A. with the town of Cave Creek is twenty-five years. It's unknown what that, those terms would be with the city of Scottsdale, but us, it would, it would, you know, there would be no agreement other than you would have to meet the respective criteria of automatic aid. So it's the agreement with the automatic aid partners being Scottsdale or Daisy Mountain. That's the term, and then the term, in the case of the town of Cave Creek, is twenty-five years. We'll find out, yeah.
Yeah, these are big decisions, and they're long-term decisions. And the last topic that I have under current events, short-term rentals. Paradise Valley and Scottsdale. Let me back up from that. The state legislature has pretty much tied the hands of all municipalities in the state in terms of being able to regulate short-term rentals through zoning and, and many things, and I don't profess to know much about this at all. Two communities, Paradise Valley and Scottsdale, who have many very, very nice houses, and some of these are being put up for short-term rentals, have been attempting to regulate this through number of police calls with extremely high fines. If you hit this level of police calls, they reject business licenses for a year and a half, different things like that. Well, part of the fear, and we've had some discussions on this and some recent activity in this area, the fear is that if it's tightening up to the south, where are these folks going to come? And it might be up here, and some of these are fair, can be fairly unruly. So we're going to take a look at it, and see what is the best approach for us to do. It'd probably be led by staff, might be some. It'd probably be led by staff, might be some people who volunteer, who have an interest in this area to help advise staff, but to do a total review and say, what should we be doing, rather than be caught by this at a later date? We don't have any recommendations, any thoughts, it's a blank slate at this time, but we think we need to get out front of it. Anything else from council members? Item number nine. Interviews, discussion, and possible action to select a town Carefree Town Council appointee to the Sky Ranch Community Relations Advisory Committee pursuant to Town Ordinance nineteen ninety-nine dash oh-three, section two dash eleven. The following applicants are being considered, and if I might ask John to take it and from this point forward, thank you.
So Sky Ranch is a private airport, and the town passed an ordinance in the early days granting a special use permit for the airport. And in that ordinance, it calls for the establishment of a community's, community relations or committee. And it lays out the rules for that committee. Specifically, it says, the advisory committee shall consist of at least three persons to be appointed by Sky Ranch, who shall be members, and of two persons appointed by the common council. So our job tonight is to fill up a vacancy from the, for our side, on the council side, on that committee. So when we announced this a month ago, we had one vacancy. And because we had such a good response, we have three very good candidates who will meet tonight. Our current representative, Thiel Damon, who was appointed in two thousand and sixteen, suggested he would step down and we could appoint two representatives tonight. So what I'd like to do is invite the three candidates that we have to just introduce themselves to the council, to the public, to speak for a couple, three minutes, and then we can decide how we'll move forward. So first, I'd like to invite Steve Better. Come on up, Steve.
Good evening, Mayor Peterson, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to consider me for the position on the Community Relations Committee. I'm a longtime pilot, general aviation side, I've been flying most of my adult life, which I guess now is most of my life. And primarily for pleasure, but like many pilots, find a way to rationalize the habit and incorporate it into business and whatnot, which I did. And so I'm positioned by background, and I had a series of clinics throughout Arizona, primarily northeast Arizona, and serviced those via air travel on a weekly basis. At one point, many years ago, I actually lived at Sky Ranch, I was a member there, flew back out of Sky Ranch to make those trips. Is that part of my practice grew, I actually have relocated up there, so I was based out of Sholo for for many years, and it's only been recently, about two years now that I've been back in Carefree, and just delighted to be back. I'm actually on the base to final approach to runway six, so I get to firsthand witness all the aircrafts, for the most part, arriving and departing Sky Ranch. Being an aviation enthusiast, I find it fantastic. I love it, that sense of airplanes from outside, I'll be looking up to see the planes. Outside of the aviation world, I understand that that isn't necessarily universally appealing. The Sky Ranch itself is a very unique community. As I say, I've lived there, really appreciated the value of that to the community, as well as to those of us who've used it from an aviation perspective. Having said that, general aviation and community airports in particular are under great scrutiny nationwide because of the impact or potential impact, I should say, on the communities. There've been several high-profile airports that have been closed, Santa Monica Airport, Naval Observatory Airport up in Chicago. There's a lot of airports that as the population grows, communities grow, the impact of the airport isn't necessarily appreciated by all. So it is very important for us to maintain really close stewardship over the airport, make sure that it's being done in a very environmentally and community-friendly manner. I've got about nearly four thousand hours of general aviation time, a variety of aircraft from single-engine distance up to turbines. I've not been a commercial pilot, but as I said, incorporated to a significant part of my life. And so I'm very passionate about the value of general aviation, and specifically with the Sky Ranch property. And so I would hope to be able to participate and represent the town, understanding the significance of due diligence and this a strong stewardship over it. Happy to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Tom Sanders. Council, my name's Tom Sanders. I live in the Village of Carefree condominiums, which is on the northeast side, the northwest side of the airport. I'm also on the HOA board at the condominium association. So you can see that the airport is basically in my backyard. I was a professional pilot for thirty-eight years. I started flying in high school went to college, got the rest of my flight ratings, and from there I flew some charter and for commuter airline, I flew for a major airline back in the eighties. And then a little over twenty-nine years, I was the chief pilot director of aviation for a corporate flight department in Michigan. We had two jet aircraft, had two airplanes, I flew about five hundred hours a year, and I managed five other pilots. Two mechanic, a truck, a peddler. Everything comes along, you know, running a flight department, including overseeing building of new hangar before I retired. One of the reasons why we moved to Carefree after I retired is the airport. We wanted to be near the Carefree Airport, we used to vacation in this area quite a few years over spring break. And we realized it was a jewel of the community, plus me being involved in the aviation my whole life. We thought living near the airport was the way to go, and that's exactly what we did. We bought a condominium. In fact, my back porch is right on the runway. I'm only about seventy-five yards from the center line of the runway. Sit back there and have coffee and breakfast and watch the airplanes land and take off and get to know the community. So I feel that it would be a great honor to be on the board overseeing the airport as far as relationships with the community. And it's a great place to live, it's Carefree. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Any questions? And our last candidate, Duke Ucati.
Mayor Peterson, town council, and members of the public, thank you very much for having us today here. I'd second everything the doctor said, as well as town. Great place to be. We also live on Long Rifle, a block away from the approach and runway six. I'm a professional pilot, I've been a professional pilot since I was twenty-one, airline transport pilot, holder of nine type ratings, transport aircraft. I work for the FAA as a aircraft evaluation chairman of the board, currently on three different aircraft, in getting production and to be produced. Living in Carefree for a few, quite a few years, my wife's native to Cape Creek, Carefree area, and second everything the doctor said, as well as Steve. If you guys have any questions as far as my aircraft aviation experience goes, I'm a flight instructor, ground instructor, remote pilot, which is drone pilot. I enjoy flight instructing. I know what airports mean for a community like Carefree. And we also moved from Sentinel Rock to Long Rifle just because of the airport. And my back porch oversees the approach end of six and departure two four. So it'd be an honor to serve on the committee, and if you guys have any questions,
No, I'll just share with you, I spent my passion for airplanes as well. I was a designer for twelve years for Boeing Military Research, so I can certainly appreciate your, you know, love of flying.
Yeah, so my office is based in Long Beach, and I'm happy enough to be lucky enough to be based home in Carefree, so. I work with those guys a lot, especially I'm one of DC nine of all the aircraft. That's not Boeing aircraft, it was Long Beach.
Yeah. I did some work for Lockheed too.
Lockheed, yeah. Yeah, so we also do the work on C one thirty project, which is a civilian L thirty-one J, which is an aircraft that's a C one thirty. Brought up to the civilian standard. Thank you, well, thank you.
Thank you. I might inject for a minute here. One of our objectives has always been to have and encourage qualified residents to come forward and participate in the town's activities and the governing of the town. And we have three outstanding candidates here that I would like to appoint all of them. Is there?
Yes, I think we can do that. The ordinance reads, the committee shall consist of at least three persons to be appointed by Sky Ranch and two persons appointed by the council. So we have the ability to do that. We have two vacancies today, and we can appoint three if the council wishes to do so. Just a little bit more background. So the committee meets quarterly, at least quarterly. And the real mission is to make sure the relationships, relationships between the residents and the airport go well. So as it was mentioned earlier, that in communities where it doesn't go so well, right, you have new homes and people object to the airport, that's a real problem. And this committee is dedicated to resolving those issues, to making sure the residents understand what's allowed and what's not, and what, and the pilots understand how to behave. If they don't behave, they're taking the test. And they can't be, I've gone to many of these meetings, and they take their job seriously. So anyway, moving forward, I would suggest, given the way the ordinance is written, that we appoint all three candidates to the.
Is there any reason to have a lot of members? Important votes come up where?
No, we need to do that, the outpost.
Okay.
No, it's more of a discussion. So if an issue arises, that they talk about it, who's the contact for managing the problem, what can be done to mitigate it?
You know, the airport, trying to think of a title, but the administrator or the manager of it usually takes the point on terms of talking to someone or addressing some kind of an issue. So I don't think it requires an odd number.
Well, each of these men are well-qualified, so I think that's a good solution. So if you're looking for a motion?
I have one question. If there is an issue and they have an opportunity to meet with the individuals in the community and address the issue, have some solutions, do they come to the council and then we're able to apply some, you know, leverage to get an issue done or addressed or resolved for the community? Is that the strategy?
They work it out amongst themselves.
Okay.
So first, the airport manager, Tommy Thompson, talks, if there's an issue, talks to the parties who are involved. And then Chad Fuller, who's the chairman of this committee from the airport side, he gets involved as well.
And they work it out. Okay, there.
We've never got, they're very cooperative people, and we've never got to the state where we have to do threaten the heavy-handed kinds of things. Well, let me, let me make, let me try and phrase a motion, and then we'll see if anyone will make that motion. But I would make the motion, or propose the motion, that we appoint each of these three gentlemen, collected of three of them, to be representatives on the name of the committee is the
Community Relations, excuse me, Sky Ranch Community Relations Advisor.
To be the town-appointed members. Candace, yes?
Mayor and council, let's, we need a motion first, a motion to appoint three members instead of the two as previously dictated. Get that passed through the council, and then go back to your motion to appoint all three of them. It's two separate motions.
Okay, so I'll make the first motion. So I will move that we appoint three town representatives to the Sky Ranch Community Relations Advisory Committee instead of two representatives.
Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Okay, so the first motion passes. Then the second motion is, would you like to make it, or should we go back?
I would like to make a motion that we appoint Steve Better, Tom Sanders, Duke Ucati to the Sky Ranch Community Relations Advisory.
I'll second that.
Motion has been made and seconded. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Thank you, gentlemen. We look forward to your participation and welcome you and appreciate your stepping forward.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Item number ten. Review, discussion, and possible action to approve the continued participation of the Carefree Cape Creek Consolidated Court in the East Valley Regional Veterans Court by authorizing the mayor to enter into a, an intergovernmental agreement and approve the fund's expenditures as needed. Judge? Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mayor Peterson, Vice Mayor Crane, and members of the town council. I am here to ask you to approve our continued participation in the veterans' court. So I'm happy to answer any questions. I will point out for all of you, the IGA, the only substantive change to it from the previous IGA that had been entered into was the length of time that it is basically in effect for. Our previous IGA was only for a year. It was then renewed, basically with mutual agreement of the presiding judges. This IGA calls for an initial five-year term that can then be renewed another five years by mutual agreement.
Thank you. Perhaps if I take a moment and explain what happened here, or why we did this. Members of the armed forces sometimes can come back with PTSD, they can come back with injuries, they're on medications, they're on drugs, et cetera, these kinds of things. And the pain and the psychological detriment can be overwhelming at times. And when they come into court, one, and I heard the judge say this, and this is something we've discussed in the past, are you a veteran? Because, correct me if I'm wrong, but as opposed to punishment as a deterrent to continuation of the behavior that they're there for, this is, let's encourage, let's see if we can't fix the problem. There are equivalent courts, you make the determination go to with the approval and agreement of the person who's been charged. Would you prefer to go? Would you be agreeable to go into the veterans' court, which is a different, and it's an equivalent, but it's a separate kind of approach to it? This is something that we felt very, very strongly about previously.
Absolutely. Mayor, this is a completely voluntary endeavor, meaning the defendant who is appearing would want to participate in the program. The prosecutor would need to agree, the court would need to agree that it was appropriate under the circumstances. It is a treatment court. So it is, it is a court, however, it is very different from normal criminal court. They do not hold trials. It's not where you have a contested hearing. Instead, someone is participating under the agreement that the goal is for them to get additional help and services where they need those services. So we may have veterans who come into the court, and as Mayor, you already pointed out, they're identified at the arraignment stage, which is the initial court appearance. And they may not have an interest because perhaps they want to fight their case, and they want their day in court. And they're absolutely entitled to do that. But for many who need the extra help, there are great incentives to participate in the veterans' court, because as the mayor pointed out, it's not a focus on punitive measures or punishment, but rather on rehabilitation and assistance. or, or punishment, but rather on rehabilitation and assistance. So for the right cases, the right defendant, it is absolutely a wonderful opportunity.
And the costs are?
The costs have increased. The reason being is that the Tempe court has actually hired a permanent coordinator. That costs money, but it also is going to assist in the process in trying to obtain additional grant funding. There has been significant grant funding in the past from the Department of Veteran Affairs. However, that grant ran out. So there are costs, but I will, I believe based on our budgetary needs and the amount of people that we actually have participating in the program, it's not going to have a major financial impact on, on our court, on the town.
So the way I understood it is if no one is referred, the cost is zero.
Exactly.
So it's a, it's a flat fee per case.
Exactly. It's a cost-sharing measure and that's exactly right. It's, it's per case what you were charged if you choose to refer someone to the court. If no one is referred, we're not charged anything.
Judge, speaking of charges, what are the majority of the charges that, that these veterans tend to have? And is it limited strictly to misdemeanors or are there felonies involved?
In this particular court, it is a misdemeanor court because it's feeding from various misdemeanor jurisdictions like Paradise Valley, Gilbert, Tempe, our court. And so primarily the kinds of cases we're talking about would be domestic violence, other types of assaults, disorderly conducts. There's also DUI. That's, that's a, that's a huge one. So those are the primary types of cases. We're not typically, the veterans court is not handling, say for example, traffic matters like a criminal speed violation because it's, you know, it's not the type of case that allows for more of a treatment type of approach, if you will.
It's a great program.
Yes. Yes. That's what I'm requesting.
I think one of the things that I know in the past as the council has considered and discussed this and it cut down to, these are people who suffered some physical or mental impairment serving in the military. And are we prepared to invest a little bit more to try and help them along in the right direction?
The mayor, Judge, I have a family, family member that went through it. It really was a huge help for her. It's been a real struggle from the Navy. In the past year, how many cases have you addressed?
We have, I believe, we haven't had any.
Oh, is that right?
No, we haven't had any. And that's, again, going back to our screening process, of course, everyone is identified at that arraignment level. We haven't had a, a large number of veterans, if you will, come through our court or have chosen not to identify for whatever reason. But we haven't had any. And that's why I say we've been participating since 2016. And I believe since that time, Nerlin, it's been less than 10 individuals. So as far as a cost to the court or a cost to the town is very minimal. But when the opportunity is there, it really is a, is a wonderful opportunity for someone to be able to participate in. Hence I'm asking for.
The cost of the veterans fixed?
Correct. It changes this fiscal year, of course, because it's a cost-sharing basis. So it's depending on the numbers that are referred to the veterans court. We get projected numbers and then true-up costs at the end.
But the cost over that fixed cost is split and distributed among the towns? Carefree, Cape, Phoenix, we all chip in?
We are only charged for our cases. So whatever our cost per case is, the cost would also, of course, that would be the public defender cost in addition to that. Everyone who participates in veterans court is entitled to the services of the public defender unless they decide to hire private counsel. So they would be absorbing that cost and prosecution services, which is a contract that's separate and apart from the court.
Please correct me if I'm wrong. I believe it's predicated upon the previous year's cost into a per-case basis for the current year. And then if costs go beyond that, then the next year, it'll take the per-case cost though.
Yes.
So no matter, almost no matter what the cost is, it's like an investment.
Of course. This is beautiful.
Narrow.
Absolutely.
Cost society, it's a great.
And I will add oftentimes, the amount of time that an individual spends in the veterans court is typically from 12, 12 to 18 months. It is a lengthy period of time, much longer than your normal criminal processing because the focus is on the treatment and services and making sure that they have access and ability to participate in all of those.
Well, in stating the obvious, I grew up with a lot of combat vets and I never met one that didn't have PTSD, no matter what you say. So they deserve a break. And it may cost us some money, but really they've, they've given a lot more than a lot of us have.
We, we pay to train them, we need to pay to heal them. That's right.
Yes. Thank you. Are there any further questions, discussion? If not, I would entertain a motion to approve extending the intergovernmental agreement and the funds needed to fund it on an, on an annual basis, recognizing this is a five-year term and then I believe renewable for five years after that.
I'll second.
You're the first.
Oh, I'm the first.
Uh-oh. Is there a second?
Second. Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Thank you, Judge.
Thank you very much.
Keep up the great work. Nerlin, thank you. Boy, we're making good progress here. Staff update now, Mark, you can't slow this down too much here. Regarding the draft capital improvement program called the CIP.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, council members, town residents. Today, I'm happy to bring forth the updated CIP program with our numbers that are greatly reduced to fit into our. Where we're off with is we have 17 programs, 17 projects over the five years, relatively evenly distributed. And then Gary, if you can get up sheet four and council members, if you look at sheet four, which is our summary page. One thing that it doesn't show, so the summary page you're looking at shows a total sum of 25, 514 million dollars over the five years. But what that sheet does not show is the revenue that we're bringing in. So we've been blessed to get funding from Maricopa Flight Control District in the amount of almost half a million dollars, as well as in the later years from MAG, we're getting roughly 5.5 million dollars for the Pima Road project. So as we reduce those costs by the $6 million plus that we get, are we, we are getting in as revenue, our total out-of-pocket cost goes down to about 19 and a half million, which is roughly 3.9 billion per year. The other thing I want to state, if somebody asked me if this does everything we need to have done, I'd say absolutely not, but it's a darn good start for our capital improvement program. And with that, I'm here to answer any questions on any project or any kind of funding or revenue issue.
I see the primary benefit to such a thing is, is formalizing in our mind what these projects are. So we don't lose any. And once we get them down and we can, you know, next year, we'll, we may reorganize the priorities. And, and the second part of the observation, and that is, six months ago, we would have had an entirely different look at what petroleum prices were and what they're going to be. And, you know, we're going to always be shifting this, but I think I find it helpful. Let's get them down, let's, let's start to work towards them. And I think this is an excellent start in this whole project.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and that's absolutely right. So after this gets approved, possibly at our next council meeting, the only figures that are locked in are the first year. Everything after that can get rearranged. Projects can get moved in and out, things of that nature. So the only thing that gets locked in is the first year funding. Thank you for that, Mr. Mayor.
So I have a question. On these charts, there's something called fiscal impact, but there's never anything in there. Why is that?
That's a very good question, Mr. Vice Mayor. So that would be more attuned to like, say, we're building a firehouse. Let me bring that example. By bringing on a firehouse, now we need some full-time equivalents, excuse me, to man that firehouse. So that's what those costs would be for. It would be for needed staff to work, live and work in, in those buildings, things of that nature.
Like the operational costs associated with CIP.
Exactly.
Are we also include any costs associated with cost savings? If you invest money in capital improvement, does that show a positive impact?
So, yes, even though we have dedicated funding for each year, and as I stated, other than the first year, it will change. But absolutely, if our project comes in much lower for some reason, yes, that would be a savings and funding for those projects. Thank you, Councilman Gager.
And one other question, so each department set priorities for the different projects. So, so Gary, how will we prioritize like everyone's number one project relative to each other? Or is that just comes out of the budget process?
That, that is part of the budget process from an annual perspective. We will start our, our budget workshops in mid-April. Part of that will be looking at the CIPs as we do every year, which is not part of the operational budget, but the capital budget. And so we'll have an evaluation of what the priorities will be and set those parties associated with the, the budget process.
So we set long-term priorities as a council?
No, so thi- this is just short-term. The annual budget would be the short-term process. The long-term process is the CIP. So we're looking at a, a five-year window here. Some communities look up to 10 years, but there's, there's fuzzy math with the, the 10-year horizon. So we're looking at a five-year horizon.
Okay, thank you.
Any further questions, comments? This will come back again in, in the budgeting process. Okay, Steve?
I'll just curious, Gary, pardon me. I, I know our fire protection services are very, they are what they are, but they're a big line item. We have for 2022, 2023, 1.1 million. Is that just a projection based on, because I think our contract ends, was it June 31st with rural metro of this year?
Yeah, so we, we, our contract is ending with, with rural metro. We're looking at a, a short-term renewal so that it will bridge us to, to automatic gate. That being said, what we're looking here, that 1.1 million dollar figure and then the following year, another $400,000 is not the operational end. So the contract is the operational and we're contracting out for labor. This is the, the assets and our depreciating assets within the firehouse or the fire truck. Automatic gate might require a brush truck, might require a tinder truck. Those things need to be negotiated and those standards need to be identified. Those standards then will result in the actual costs of that hardware. So these are kind of placeholders at this point in time that we haven't identified. In addition, when you look at these numbers, there's opportunities for grants. And so some of the things that we're working on is some grants associated with the purchase of, of this fire equipment. And so we've identified some grants and, and applied for some of those grants and we'll see if we're successful. That will be part of the budget process and then we'll have a grant line within our annual budget that identifies what, what we're looking for.
Oh, they stated, are they able to vote?
Both.
Thank you.
I think that's really a good point. So if we have a plan that forces us to look way to the future, getting these grants can take a long time. So we'd say, oh, in three years, we want to do this, so we can make the application now. So it's really a good tool.
Yeah, what kind of timeframe is associated with a grant here?
They vary, so it's, it's not something I, it all depends on the respective grant.
Further questions, comments? Excellent work, Mark, Gary. I know you guys have arm wrestled, gone back and forth a bit here. Thank you. This is a very, very helpful tool. We are, no, we're not doing number 12. You're right, we have item number 13 on the next page. Review, discussion and possible action to approve resolution 2022-05 and authorize the publication of a call of elections and do so as an all-male ballot election. Candace, may I ask you to take us through that, please?
Mayor and council, this is really a formality. As you know, we are now part of consolidated election. We're going to have an election this fall. However, it's tradition for the council to basically bless this election, call it so that we can notify all the public and put it out there that we are having an election and remind them that Carefree is an all-male ballot election municipality. With that being said, we also just recently contracted with the county, there will be a polling location in this building for both the primary election for 28 days, July and August, as well as for the general election, that's in October, November. So in approving this resolution, you're simply providing staff and the county with your approval to move forward in completing the election process for our new council.
Do I recall there's been some legal challenges on all-male ballots and?
There is currently, right now in the legislature, a challenge that would eliminate all-male ballot in any municipality. That's still going through the process, nothing's going to happen this year, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
So any questions, comments? Hearing none, I think we need, and what, what is the motion that we need to approve this?
It would be a motion to approve resolution 2022-05 authorizing the publication of the call of election and the all-male ballot election.
Are there any council member, any who would, motion has been made, is there a second? Motion has been made and seconded. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye, opposed? None opposed, that passes. Item number 14, adjournment. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Thank you all for coming.